Tom North, it's very long. For a flag, to the flag, and as this is America, conservative republic, for what it belongs, for our nation, for God, and the world, liberty, and justice for all. Yeah, we're all up, under the wall of all?
Any questions?
Should we grab some beer?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any sort of? Any changes to either the October twenty-seventh or the November third being? You can add motion to accept this, right?
Um, motion to accept, November twenty-seventh is one of the three.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Tim on that, just second page, then just a little.
And this is for Martin Dixon, we hired a day before time.
Yes, we'll see if our time or.
The over again, beginning. What's up?
I'll be the copy of two things on.
Alright, um.
Just the full contract.
So we're already in on currently, we're gonna be saving a little more than we thought.
Yeah, five hundred and something.
Yeah, I'm going.
Do you need a motion last time to go with this contract?
Do it. Don't we have to read on to the stuff before for that? Alright, we gotta start with department reports. So our commandment.
Yeah, we're either retired, um, so myself, the doctor, I'm from, um, out of our local, uh, Ernest Menn expert who lives here in town, reporting to have, um, we met in, in work on some future 2000 planning, um, the biggest thing is we're gonna build up resources, that if we did have a major emergency in town, kind of what is our plan for, for, what are we gonna use different resources from in town, it's very open, we do have one which are updated, one of the companies on there, may or may not be in business anymore, so, we're gonna update that plan, that way, I don't think we had a large disaster, a long-term event, people without power for long terms, how would we take care of them, so, um, we've started that process, myself and Chief Ferguson, that with the school officials to start planning for an outside evacuation drill, um, that's something that's, that hasn't been done for quite some time, and is well needed, so, in the event of a, a major issue at the school, we can get all the students and staff outside, so, that's kind of what we've been working on recently for, for Ernest Menn.
Many, many. Questions?
A lot of fire.
What problem?
What is the first person to say you were part in that?
Uh, firefighter, problem, steam problem.
I'll be attending.
Hi, that's okay. Um, so as far as fire goes, um, we've responded to twenty-five calls for service last month, it was one of our busiest months so far this year, eighteen medical aids, seven fire calls, um, we got no mutual aid EMS call in the town whatsoever, um, so, so that's good, we've responded to a hundred ninety-six calls this year, uh, here in town and mutually, um, uh, crew responded to one-twenty Ridgrove for a large debris fire, I'm sure some of you probably saw a lot of fire trucks coming through town, we have about seventy-five pallets of failed, uh, coconut husks on fire in, on that very, very windy day that we had, um, all of our apparatus responded, as well as a large number of our, our in-town personnel, um, we'd also like to thank our mutual aid from Carmington, Milton, Wolfboro, excuse me, Wolfboro, Wakefield, Top-Tom, Merle, and Acton, all responded to help us that night, mostly just because of the, the issues with the wind, we had to get a little one run in a hurry, um, so, uh, as well as during the incident, uh, ambulance three, they, ambulance three and Alton Engine two, uh, handled the medical aid in town during that incident. Lieutenant Premier and, uh, AMT Miller, Malar rather, are still attending paramedic school, and AMT Cole is in the AMT eight, advanced AMT class, the statewide burning ban has been lifted, um, you still are required to get burning permits for outside fires, however they are now, um, allowed with a permit. Um, several members of the department, uh, attending a firefighter one training, taught by myself, um, we have five fire alarm personnel in the class, so, hopefully for January, we'll have five more certified firefighters here in town, which is great, um, this past Saturday, we conducted live fire training in Hollis Main at a, at a burn building, a structure built to burn in, essentially, um, Lieutenant Lovett and Engineer Traver, as well as myself, and Captain Osgood from the York Beach Fire Department, and Lieutenant Libby from the Hollis Fire Department, all were working there that day to, to get some valuable live fire training, it's kind of a difficult thing to replicate, um, but that building does a good job of that, we only get ten burners in that day, so they get a lot of, uh, live fire training experience, which is, is pretty critical, it's kind of hard to replicate in the firehose. Uh, members participated in auto extrication training here in town, for some of you who've seen the cut-up car, it'll be on the highway department, um, we were fortunate that American Used Auto donated the, the paralysis towing helped us get it here, and they're gonna bring it back as well, so, that's also some pretty excellent training, um, and that's kind of all I have for you, if you have any questions, right, awesome, thank you.
CRF, per, personally, oh yeah, alright.
Alright, um, we did, uh, we purchased eight SCBA cylinders, uh, it was like back June, if, um, we purchased eight of them as kind of a trial basis, to see if they're gonna work for every water equipment and everything, um, they worked out excellent, um, so we're just looking to purchase eight more, the pricing hasn't changed, I contacted the vendors, so, I had the three quotes, it would be sixty-three hundred and twenty dollars, eight more of those, and that's gonna help extend that late water, the SCBA is, which are about ten thousand dollars a piece, so.
Do you have the money in the budget?
Yeah, we have, uh, just over thirty thousand SCRs, so.
Oh, yes.
So is there a recommendation of who you want to go with?
Uh, I'm making sure fire, of course, something last time, they're substantially cheaper, I think it's sixty-three twenty, the closest, uh, the hottest is ninety, hundred, ninety-two hundred, two hundred.
We have their.
I've got a question, um, your capital reserve fund, to expend it, could it be done by the August eleventh, or is it not to be done by a vote of the legislative body at the town meeting?
Uh, they can, they can raise it, generally at the town meeting, you approve the funds that go into the CRF, and if that is something, it's a decision to expend those funds.
And sometimes they're written in the town, it's.
It's managed, yeah.
I don't know, that's one, yeah. I know you will.
There a motion to move forward?
This is the one you wanted?
Correct, yes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. You move forward with the?
Purchase of the CRF.
For the downation one, for sixty-three twenty? Okay.
Awesome.
All in favor? Perfect, alright. We have a report to lie in court. So from September ninth, October twenty-seventh, gravel dirt roads have.
You have a time, you should be there.
You think? Um, let's see, located Old Wally, so number twenty-two, order signs at NEBS, to the board, put down the flags, have handbooks picked up in Town Beach, Old Town Hall Parking Lot, talked with S slash W Dunn, Nish David, gravel town, D G P, D P plus parent, roster, I think? Uh, driveway permits, I'm not making fun of it, I'm, I'm trying to read this, two driveway permits on the road, map, uh, lot, map eight, lots, eleven, nine, ten, rented brush forward, they had Ridgrove, New Durham Road, Kings Highway, Silver Street, various spots, put blind drive sign on Silver Street, put stone in watch spots, dirt roads, cut shoulders, table wood, and balance pruce, break Durham Road dirt, gravel New Durham Road dirt, prep yard for winter, put sand dirt in number twenty-six, new truck, put plows up front of winter, got plows to pick up. Wait. Can you? Right there, that works.
Make sure also.
Make sure also, okay. Uh, order ten loads of salt, just in two salt sheds, mixed up salt, uh, sand and salt mixed, drop off. New trucks for inspection, regios, saw, cut new, uh, uh, new, cut new enforcement, culvert to replace, put message on board for our department to piss culvert enforcement road, break New Durham Road and Gary Road. Call on presence of concrete pad, the pumps, call Sanders and wings on trucks to have ready for winter, patched in the culvert that had put on enforcement road, so they dug that out and patched winter. Alright, um, police.
Chief Ferguson, police, uh, so this is for the month of September, eight, October, and we didn't have a department meeting in September, but, uh, we had six hundred and twelve calls for service during that period, ninety-six incident reports were generated, uh, five arrests were made, no motor vehicle accidents in town, and forty-five citations or warnings motor vehicle were issued. Uh, we continue our annual training, uh, with the requirements of the New York Police Academy, um, all officers in the department at this point have fulfilled their requirement for the year, uh, again, we utilize the speed trailer, uh, throughout the town in different targeted areas, as a deterrent and an educational piece, uh, just kind of raising people's awareness, because most people travel these roads pretty regularly, and when that goes off, we just let you know, you may not know you were speaking, that'll let you know, so, it's hopeful, hopeful that people will, will hear this warning. Uh, we received our new firearms during this period, and they were issued out, all the officers completed their, uh, annual qualifications, uh, we did those with the new firearms, so everyone's qualified and fulfilled their firearms requirements for the year. Officer Phelps started her FTO process, uh, the Chevrolet Cruiser went to New England Vehicle Outfitters, and it's being outfitted, uh, for a frontline service vehicle. Uh, we received training from the Hampshire State Police J-one, they came down, uh, we had the means for, uh, what they call E-citation or, or J-one, uh, but we were never utilizing it, uh, so we've gone ahead and received that training, and we're in the process now of putting everything, uh, on with J-one, so that it can all be transferred telephonically to the courts, to the D F B and what have you, uh, over the course of this, uh, we received one mobile unit radio and two portable radios from a joint brand that was written with the Traffic County Sheriff's Department, uh, saving us a considerable amount of money. We assisted with multiple events throughout the town, with the RAC Department and other organizations. Officer Hutchins completed training in background investigations, FTO school and instructor development, so in the coming year, that'll be a great help to us here at the department, uh, we're very successfully completing all that. Uh, officers worked very diligently during this period, serving residents of Middleton and conducting traffic enforcement, uh, we urge any residents with concerns, complaints, or compliments, to contact the Middleton Police Department, we encourage all feedback, so please feel free. Any questions? I, I do have one thing that's not on the agenda real quick, but I'll just give it to you guys, it kind of came to light quickly. Uh, with the grant, with the portable radios, I know we discussed it at the beginning of the year, uh, radios that we currently have are outdated and not supported by Motorola, uh, which means they still work, but should one of them break, it's unsupported, they will, I think they can't get them right there, uh, so with that grant, we're fortunate enough to get two radios, uh, I have three quotes for more portable radios, if the town is interested in potentially looking to purchase two more, which would leave us in a great spot, uh, if you have the money to do that in the budget, uh, it wasn't something I was anticipating doing this year, but given the circumstances, uh, it might be a valuable option for the town.
That would definitely be on the agenda for.
For next week, so I'll leave this with you guys, these are three quotes from three vendors, but they're actually, after getting the quotes, it looks like Motorola sets the pricing, so, they all have varying numbers on them, but it's just different equipment, you know, whether it be a different propeller length that we're quoted with it, so, um, and then the other thing I got for you guys is two quotes as far as body cameras, so, um, I know it was something that was discussed over the years, with the town and previous select boards and current select board, um, I don't have a standpoint on it, I guess would be the best way to put this, I think they're a valuable asset and a tool, but there's also a great cost that could be associated with them, uh, but I did go ahead because this company, Wolfcon, continuously calls me, uh, so I did go ahead and get a quote from them, uh, and research their product, and then in comparison to that, I called back, so I'm gonna quote from them as well, so if you guys, I'll leave these, if you guys are able to maybe discuss further around the next week.
Okay, I'll leave them for. On the P.
Thank you.
Please. Alright, um, for tax collector. So, so, the taxpayer. Guess who was in? Been called for, previously brought in a grand total of seventy-one thousand eight hundred three dollars and twenty-eight cents. And then, let me look directly, the tax collector was called as a cost of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
One hundred bucks.
Oh, one cent, okay, sorry, cool, yeah, alright, alright, that, looks like the tax collector had one, one hundred and five thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-one cents in taxes. Now the treasurer. Alright, um, I'm pleased to bear with the, that with the end of my assistance, for the audit, I have renewed my rating of your responsibilities, April, May of twenty twenty-five, of the intercalated knowing consistencies, and during work on June, I have great news about cell phone upgrade, after learning my consolidated needs, contacted up the company, I decided to reach out to you, Kathy Bossy, who worked with the town to set the cell phone system we have now, she was able to discover our new, uh, discover who our new contract is, as well as how it saved us more money, the original proposal would have saved us around four hundred and fifty dollars a month, the agreement being exacted to sign increases savings around five hundred and thirty dollars, I've attached email, she sent with a breakdown of additional savings, the free month we were promised, also noted in the agreement. Let's see now, um. So, bigger court, treasurer's support, and we're dividing our account as a month, this knowledge, all checks, our sequence has been had for all the transfers matched those, month month bank statement, all the costs matched those shown, month bank statement, bank statement downs, uh, overview, and know-it-all regulations found, operations been organized and filled up, put here in review, by the house count, closed, need find summary, all ten actions, the monthly in pressures, something that's positive, a summary of gaining from that. Alright, so beginning balance, one million eight, one million eight five thousand three hundred one dollar. Sound good? So, beginning balance was seven hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Let's see, ending balance was one million three hundred ninety-nine dollars, two hundred ninety-seven cents, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and then four hundred five. See, this part of the bond fund had forty, uh, forty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars, eighty-seven cents, and this bond fund has seventy-seven thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars, fifty-one cents, and the combination, mission had eighty thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Any questions? CEO. So.
So there's ten permits that have been issued, no new bills, just one for fire or anything else?
Of course, and all, let's see, what's that building permits issue, looks like we spent on eleven stolen permits issued, with a four thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-seven taken in. Uh, for full building permit, demolition, plumbing, gas, under golf, permits issued, like there was fourteen issued, but five left of golf, few plumbing, some in gas, for a total of nine hundred sixty dollars taken. Now, let's see, and that, let's see, for the whole year, have been all the other, one hundred forty-seven permits, bringing in whole piece of fifty-five thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars and eight cents. Municipal force.
Yes, that's me, um, so, the four in the town, uh, tax point has obviously been pulled up in targeting, um, so looking to replace that eventually, looking to replace that home, that concrete needs to be pulled up, it's, uh, has it, it's got holes, it's got, bricks in it, so, looking to that, I don't know, the volunteers, James Galt, he's got some just looking to purchase materials, and that come out of the municipal building, CRF, and, um, it looks like that would be less than thirteen hundred dollars, so, between two rooms, I'm just looking for, moving to spend no more than thirteen hundred dollars on the force, those two rooms.
Good motion?
I'll make a motion.
In favor? Oh, sorry, sorry. Alright, in favor? Alright. Here was comments.
I, I'll, I'll, um, Mike, did you get an actual contract from Tony, uh, the only thing I saw immediately was the list of the maps, did we actually get a contract?
No, when I talked to the, you're supposed to such, oh, what's up about you on, uh, like you mentioned.
I know, I just didn't, nope, I missed it or not, so I just wanted to definitely check we have.
There's still a five record from Tony.
Yeah, the one that he just hasn't given us a formal contract.
Right, so there's still a five record.
That's not bad.
Fun?
The rec is planning a Christmas party for anyone who lives in town, um, and their children, um, adults are more than welcome to, it will be in the Middleton Elementary School on Summer thirteen, um, they'll be paying practice, well, have gifts, same paths and stuff for the kids, and Santa might show up, and. Middleton Elementary School and.
But not the, uh, party.
Eight, two, uh, what am I gonna do?
Mike?
Alright, so, a lot of you all know that I'm doing work with John Dear, um, working with them the last week, I ended up taking Wednesday off to meet with two of the technicians, uh, in the sales department, so come to find a couple things out with that loader, uh, one, when we purchased it or after repainted, it was stickered the wrong number, so that went from a six seventy to a six seventy-two A, which when I talked to Jeremy, um, made it not that great of a machine, um, with what we found on it, the, there was a non-working power meter, so they weren't able to tell the correct hours, the machine had run, um, the tires had run there, not sure if Mr. Washburn, if you guys had put them on when you had received there of the key from Wakefield.
Where's your problem tires?
According to the sale guy from John Dear, those were wrong tires, uh, I did get an estimate from probably from, um, a set of tires, forty-five hundred dollars, right around there with disposal of a newer set, not sure if those are the tires that you let the numbers off of the tractor, which they said didn't do anything, because they were wrong tires on there, uh, that machine is a, uh, nineteen eighty, we purchased that machine on March twenty-four, two thousand four, fifteen thousand dollars from the town of Wakefield, the estimate they gave me for the total of that machine, um, with four tires that are correct for that machine, is that can weigh from about fifteen to about twenty thousand dollars, six tires for that machine, they couldn't get it running because it was starting so annoyed, we tried jumping it with, uh, a jumper and a jump pack, and it wouldn't start, we didn't want to turn it over, uh, Dan was able to tell me that all the gears do work on it, but the trade in buying for that machine, uh, is pretty low, um, if we were to trade it through them, the cost of that machine is about five thousand dollars, and they said that if we were to private sell it, we could probably add maybe ten percent on top of that, which would bring it, and if we didn't, all the work to it, then the cost of it would just go up even more, so I'm not sure what the town wants to do with that, but that is all the information I've gotten in the last few days, in the last week almost, dealing with, uh, McCann from John Dear, and the salesman from John Dear, um, so those are the numbers I have.
And do you have the evaluation that give a hell?
Can, do you have the evaluation they give out?
Um.
I reached out and I said that they have, we have to have permission from you.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I have, that Jeremy sent me over a thing tip this morning, because I sent him a Brian message this morning before I went to work. About the cost of, of what it was going to be to trade in. And that's what, uh, Jeremy sent me a message this afternoon right before I left work, so that's all I do have. Um, and going back to when the work was done, Brezios, that was done in. That was done in two thousand sixteen. And like you had mentioned, that the center fin had been redone and they had to re-weld a part of the frame. The cost on that was ten thousand dollars, right around ten thousand dollars in two thousand and fifteen.
That's a big expense on the machine. That's a big expense.
Right.
Tire part, you know, maybe not the exact correct tires that came on the machine before. But obviously it's done job all this time.
Yeah, and so.
If you were, you know, if you were a guy for this type of car, two percent was a greater. If you go with big money radio tires on the grid, there's no need to add in this time. You're not traveling.
Yeah.
The state that went to highway.
Right.
Back around that grid, on the issue, on the project by the state, project by Wakefield, which is side by side. Both places did substantial amount of work on it. Turn cable completely replaced, like I said before. And a lot of other stuff besides that pin, then eighty-five percent hydraulic line replaced also.
I did, I did.
And that and stuff all week, but we own it. If you're going to spend that much on it to get it back, running. You're not going to replace it for that. And for what you've used it for, I feel, it lasts a long time. I probably remember twenty twenty. I had a small hydraulic beneath the dash.
Yeah.
I think the brake brakes might have stopped breaking. So I, but you know, probably dry water too.
The tires, the tires were all dried on it, uh, I thought, I thought dried on it. Uh, they were, and the, the biggest issue that they said that they were having now, when Jeremy went back and Brian went back to the office. The biggest thing they have, and I'm trying to find right now, is parts of this machine, because it's sold. Uh, yeah.
We always said we wanted to, which could hit the dad. I don't believe it's going to hit the dad. That's what I'm gonna say. That's what I would.
Yeah.
One thing that makes me wonder, there's not no problem with replacing it at all. Just talk about, which is plain to read.
Yeah.
You know, I just feel bad if the next guy that comes along and go, he didn't, wants to know why you own something, they could put some on the entry. We only have to replace it for that. I can't have what you gotta do.
Yeah.
But I don't really want to see it one at all. Just there's no replacement. The other thing to be, be organized, we have someone that represents the highway department.
Uh, we're talking about grid right now. If you want to talk about something more meaningful to comment, do that. Right now, we're just focused on the grid.
All right, we'll go with that. That's just my opinion. I think you're already deciding to sell it.
Yeah.
You're not talking about replacing it. I don't know why. I guess you wanted to buy.
So, so to, so, so if we were to replace it and we were to get a used one. I was given the estimate of a used one, I believe it was a two thousand seventeen, two thousand fifteen, right there. Don't quote me on the issue because I don't really remember it. But that's starting for that year model, almost exactly what we have is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
So.
For twenty thousand roughly in that one, we could probably give some more years out, right? Roughly twenty?
Yeah.
Or it's a hundred fifty?
Colin, you had a question too, right?
I was just gonna ask if you had the tires, but that's if they decided they wanted another quote or I can tell you who the person was that gave it. Well, I had two different quotes for some of the new tires for last month.
I just have that one that you sent me. That was a, they didn't.
No, I mean the size that they gave you, the correct size.
They didn't give me that.
Okay.
They, when they were looking at it and they showed up there, they told me that those were the wrong tires when I looked back, because it went broke down. So. I thought I had one on grid. Like I said, the estimate they gave us was five thousand dollars, so.
Um, the only thing I had is, what's that? Went back, well, yeah, we sent us emails, was, uh, you guys have every email that I've sent for the deal. So, and that's been there since the beginning. All right. Paul, comment? Enter.
Um, Dan, the charter rental on the side.
Want Dan to put the charter rental on the side?
Yeah, I was supposed to move ahead. It is the twenty second, sixteen p.m.
They are out, I think, most of this week, so it may not be up for a while.
Nobody else.
We can get it on there.
I don't know. That's sixteen p.m. It was a little bit five hundred. Our choice plot list is out on my registry dot com. If anybody is interested in helping families in the town. Just go on myregistry.com and search for twenty twenty-five Middleton children. Listen to all of it.
That's myregistry.com, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five Middleton children is what you can search. If you go onto the fire department, um, Facebook page, there is a link to that, the registry as well.
Andrew, the gifts on record to you, venture with low families.
Uh, the gifts are all being shipped to the church.
Okay.
The church will package them up and then the fire department delivers them as well as some boxes.
Okay.
And we'll take donations to the box if anybody wants to help you out.
All right.
Kirk. One thing I didn't speak about when I was doing the presentation to the police department is, um, this is more for the people out there that are listening or watching online. We are seeking quotes for repairs to the shed at the police department. We're looking to have the roof replaced on the shed and have the, uh, some of the rod boards, uh, replaced and have the whole shed painted. Uh, reached out to quite a few local handyman and what have you. Uh, I've got some verbal quotes that were supposed to come in writing, but we've gotten zero actual quotes in writing for anyone. So anybody's out there listening, they're looking, interested in that type of work, please reach out to me.
Good question. Scott, where is the materials going to come from? Do you have a charge at the Brezios or anything like that?
I, well, right now I was looking to have a, a handyman or a contractor, you know, deal with the whole thing. But yes, could we, could we arrange to get materials and have materials on site and essentially just look at labor, yes.
I want you to know that.
Okay.
You well? Being on?
Um, I'd like to motion to the third set. I'll send.
On paper? Burger.